We are going to gavel back in from closed session. We had closed session where no action was taken. We will start this session and we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. And Mr. Liebel, would you mind leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance? There are some days that is absolutely my favorite part of the meeting. But not today. There's a lot of wonderful things that are going to go on today. And we have a lot of special guests in the audience. As I said, it's an incredibly enthusiastic group and that's very, very nice to see. So we are going to move forward with our organizational meeting. And at this point in time, Dr. Crop, I believe you will take Mrs. Davidson and I down to the podium, correct?
I will. I know I'm a little kid. I've lost a stack of papers, but I'm on this.
Okay, good.
So this is not what it is about, but I want to take a moment just to say, I have actually known both of these beautiful and amazing women for years in very different capacities. So it is really my honor to get to deliver this oath. And so both of you can repeat after me. Aye. And then when I say aye, then you're going to put in your name and then you repeat after me and I'll try to go in short phrases that are reasonable. All right, ready? Aye.
Aye. Oh, Marla Davidson.
Do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
I do solemnly swear and affirm that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That was clever. And the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Constitution of State of California against all enemies and foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
That I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
I do.
So this is a night that I've waited for, but this community as a whole got together and from a very grassroots level, put your hearts together, your minds together, and created an energy and a force that I'm very proud to represent. It is my greatest honor to stand before you. I love this community. I've loved it for myself, for my children, for my time as a teacher. Greatest honor of my life. And now I'm so excited to be working with Diana and with this board and the executive board to move forward into the 21st century, to get everything going in the best way possible and to be an ear who will, that will always listen to everything you have to say and a heart that will research it with my mind and with my emotion and with my vested love for the kids in this community. So I thank you for this honor. It's a distinct honor and I'm very, very privileged to be able to sit at this table with all of you. So thank you.
I'll just say in a very short manner that I'm very honored to have been reelected to the board. I've served for eight years. I love this community with an incredible sense of passion in many, many different ways. And I believe very strongly in public education. I believe that it is the foundation of which our country is based and that we need to be able to have that for all children. And that's something that is work we've done on this board and is work I hope to continue to do for the next four years. Thank you very much. Okay, we can now move on. And just to make sure that everyone is clear, I was the acting vice president and clerk of the board and that is why I am moving the meeting forward at this point in time. So the next thing that we have to do on our agenda is make sure that we elect officers for our upcoming year of 2020-19. And I will now open it up for any nominations for president.
I nominate Diana Hill for president of our school board.
I gladly second that.
Thank you very much. I'm very honored. We go ahead and take a, just a regular vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes 4-0. Thank you very much. We next go to the election of our vice president. And I'm looking for a nomination for the vice president.
I'd like to nominate Mae Kattulie as our vice president clerk.
And I'd like to second that. Oh, I'm sorry. No problem, Marla. So we... You'll have plenty of opportunity. So that has been, we have had that nomination and it has been seconded. I'll take a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That also passes 4-0. Oh, and opposed. Okay. Maybe there's a ghost somewhere. Karen is on, back from her cruise. So we are missing one of our board members this evening. Mrs. Russell is not with us this evening. So Mrs. Kattulie, congratulations. Thank you very much. And I know that I have the most extraordinary clerk of vice president because she will keep me on task. So we'll be doing quite well. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. We will now, as we move forward in our organizational part of our meeting, we will look at our dates and times of our meetings. And we, everybody should have a copy at their seat. And if there are any meetings, of course, we can change meetings throughout the year, but we really try hard not to do that. We really try to make sure that our meetings are very clear, always put, the agendas are out there and that people know when they can be able to come and address the board. That's something that's very important for us and very important for us to hear. So we try to do a whole block of the calendar year at our organizational meeting. And then occasionally something will come up where we have to change a meeting or so. So also, if we are looking as board members and we see any meetings on here that may not work with our schedule that we may already be aware of, we can bring that up and then we can make any changes. Does anybody have any meetings that they would like to bring forward? Okay.
I'm going to be going to Sacramento for Action Day in March. And I, to March 12th. I always try to come back in time for the board meeting, but sometimes it doesn't work out that way. But I would say we don't need to change it for that.
Okay. And we do have two board meetings in March. So I was going to bring up two meetings. One, I know that I'm aware that I will be out of town April 9th. And I am also, October 22nd is my day job, is our international conference. So those two dates that I am aware of, we can leave them if we want and feel if we need to change meetings later on or if we want to look. The April date I looked into and we could move that to the following week, correct, Tina? But Weaver will be on spring break, but not the rest of the district. What are thoughts about that? Isn't this exciting? We're having fun.
Okay, I'm sorry, Diana, the date.
April 16th.
April 16th.
I am good with April 16th.
I will say that that will be the first meeting for our new superintendent and I would like to really make sure that we would all be here.
I would, yes, I had not made that connection yet and I would think that we shouldn't change it so that everyone could be here.
Are you okay with that?
I am.
Okay.
How are you, Mom? I'm great with it.
Okay. And we'll check with Karen, but can we go ahead and make that change? Thank you. And then October 22nd, we have two meetings in October and I would put a lot of faith in you running the meetings. I don't think we need to change that.
Yeah, okay.
So Tina, how do we need to, do we need to vote on this? Okay.
I would like to make a motion that we approve the calendar that was amended for that one date in April. Other than that, all the other dates as presented.
Second?
I'll second it.
I'll give Marla's a chance.
We've had a motion. We've got a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Our new meeting schedule passes. Then often we, oh, we will do board assignments at the end of the meeting at that time. Okay. Thank you very much. So we are now going to move forward. We have moved an action item. Action items we usually do after consent, but we've moved an action item forward. And the action item is the approval of an independent contractor for Danielle Nava.
Nava Miharis.
Nava Miharis. And she is a consultant and she is going to work with our district on the Human Relations Task Force. Very exciting work. And so I need a move, I need a motion to go ahead and move her contract forward.
I'll move.
I need a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It moves forward. And so now we will move in. Did you want to go ahead?
So during my superintendent report, which is two items down, I will be calling her up and introducing her because she's part of my report.
If that's okay. That is wonderful. Thank you very much. Usually at this point in time, we usually have a president's board report, but we, since we didn't have a president going into this meeting, there is not a prepared board report. But I did have a couple of comments and I just wanted to say, as I said before, I'm so very honored and I really want to welcome Marla, Mrs. Davidson to the board. And I know that we're going to continue to do great work and we work really hard in this district on keeping the main thing the main thing. And the main thing is our students. It's who we advocate for, the ones that have no voice. That is our job as a district and it's, we have a meeting once a year where we sit down, the board does, and talk about protocols and talk about our goal and our vision and those kinds of things. And at that thing, at that meeting, we always really focus on keeping the main thing the main thing and moving forward with the work that we can do for not only our students, but our community and our staff and our parents. And so I feel very blessed to be able to continue to do that work and to do that advocate. And I also want to say that I really believe that the school board, much like a city council, is the very best of government. And it's the best of government because our position is nonpartisan. We're supposed to keep the main thing the main thing. And also because it's very local. We are local people who live in this community. We serve those people. We see those people in Target all the time. And so you know, you're bonds. You know your voice is being heard. And we know that we're, that's who we're serving. And so it is an honor to be able to serve this board and serve this community. And this, and the district is very excited about some of the opportunities that we have. So we will keep the main thing the main thing and we will keep things moving forward. So that's my president's report. Dr. Crop, on to you. Student? The main thing, the main thing.
Good evening, esteemed board members, Dr. Crop, committee and community. This, tonight, I will share with you how Los Alamitos High School has been excelling in the 40s. My name is Angelica Montes. Arts at Los Alamitos are sprinkled around campus like snow in the winter this season.
That's lovely.
Tonight, at a Christmas Carol, Los Al Drama and Band combines to celebrate in the holiday spirit. Also, this past weekend, choir put on their annual winter show, which was a huge success. So congratulations to Band, Drama, and Choir. As you can see, our winter sports are beginning. Here highlighted are our basketball team wearing jerseys as red as Rudolph's nose. Similar to the Rangers, they are blazing a path to victory this season with a score of 61 to 54 at their last game. Congrats, boys basketball, and keep up the good work. Academics at Los Alamitos, through this stormy cold California winter, fellow Griffins have shown that not even a blackout from first to fifth period can stop us from learning. Personally, I learned how to read through just candlelight and I relearned how to use a real clock. Thank you, thank you. Unlike me, however, fire science knows how to use old and new technology and they demonstrated this at the OC Pathway Showcase. So good job, fire science. In previous years at Los Al, at Los Al High School, winter break never really felt like a break because we still had finals looming over us. However, this year, we got our presents early because our semester, because our semester ends right before winter break. So teachers and students alike can have a stress-free holiday. And on behalf of the Los Alamitos High School student body, I would like to wish everyone in this room a happy holidays. Thank you and go Griffins.
Are there any questions from the board? What a lovely job and thank you for really demonstrating how important moving that calendar is to students and I'm sure teachers as well. I'm sure it makes it much easier to have given finals the week before the holidays than the week after. So thank you very much. Now, Dr. Crop. It is our superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam President, esteemed members of the board, community staff, Angelica, our student. It is really my pleasure. I'm going to give an update and today, tonight, my update is on the Human Relations Task Force. So a little history and some of this, I'll be meeting with our new facilitator consultant later this week. And here's part of our meeting. Danielle, before you come up. So our history is, we did have a town hall meeting and we met with families and staff at MAGA. We had several board meetings and workshops where we discussed this issue and heard from families and staff. And then I also had a meeting with each school staff and each meeting was very different. And then we put together a focus group. And I'll remind everyone, I invited anyone that had reached out to me or spoke at the board meeting to join that focus group. And there were about 40 people that I invited on two days and about 35 people were able to make it. And we talked about, what is the purpose of a task force? What do we hope to accomplish? What are the strengths in Los Al? What are our areas for growth? When then, what are our priority areas? Information, what information do you need and who should be on the task force? And I thought initially we would finish in a day and not so. The discussions were really rich and we used a lot of butcher paper and we broke people up in group and it was really informative and a, something I highly valued. And so these are some of the identified priority needs in no particular order. Professional development for all staff, social media guidelines for all staff, and they would like those to include aspects of how we hire, that we go over them and perhaps evaluation. Improved disciplinary practices for human relations infractions and what that means is to add an education component for students and to also ensure that there's counseling and support for the victim. Improved recruitment practices. And what that means is do, see what more we can do to try to recruit a more diverse applicant pool. Add student programs and a lot of great ones were mentioned. So if we identify ones that are already outstanding, let's implement them across the district. And if we find one that looks really outstanding, let's implement it. Analyze and exist and improve existing programs, not that they need improvement, but we have Guam, we used to have a World of Difference, we have a GROW program, and we have programs preschool through high school. Some have been around a long time and some people thought maybe it's time to relook at those and make sure that they're still as good as they could be. And then add additional curriculum that's articulated, preschool through grade 12. And then parent community education and the forums. So they liked, I don't know if likes the right word, but quite a few people appreciated when I had the town hall meeting that was an open forum. So a few people would like to see more of those. And so I wanted to share some new programs that we already have in place and some of which actually started last year, but they weren't firmly in place and they weren't institutionalized or in our system, but I do want to share it at this time. So we started working on a sixth grade summit last year. And it's a day for all sixth graders to come together and then in small groups and working with their sixth grade teacher, teaching teams to really talk about, you know, their self-worth, how to behave, how to get along with others, how they belong, and there's a few other things that they did. And so that happened already this year at both McCullough and Oak. And we're currently planning on a separate day for seventh and eighth graders. We also already added an education component for human relations infractions. We piloted it last spring and 20, about 20 students were invited to come on a Saturday for a four-hour Saturday and the reviews are really good. So we held one this year and four students came and the reviews are really great too. So obviously, we hope we never need that, but we have four scheduled the rest of this year. So if there are any infractions, we have them right away. We can put kids in that education. And that's in addition to suspension, but it's a way to try to change the behavior and change really the understanding in the heart of the kid. We also really solidified, we've always had it, but to make sure no one falls through the cracks, that there has to be counseling and support for the victim. And then this year, we just, Mrs. Reed actually mentioned, I think, to me and I don't know who else was in previous conversations, but why don't we do upstandard training for all middle school students? So, you know, when we talk to students or students turn something into us, and I've heard it firsthand hundreds of times over the years, of course, but, you know, how come you, did you say anything in that moment? And most of the time, they say no. And it's not because they don't care. They cared enough to come tell us, but they don't know how or they get afraid. And I think it's better now than it used to be. But the latest research I read, there might be new that our new consultant's going to tell us about, but that if someone intervenes in 10 seconds, for example, bullying stops. So if we can teach our kids to step in and say, hey, what are you doing? Let's stop and support that student. We really could be a district that eradicated bullying, bullying. So, and other forms of any human relations infractions for race, ethnicity, any of that. And so we're trying to put that together now. We just started and we'll start probably at the middle school. We also have an international culture club that started at MAGA that's doing phenomenal work. And I'm sure when MAGA does her school report, they'll share what they've done. And as you know, every school who's already done their school reports has shared the work they're doing this year in human relations. So I just invite the public, they can always watch that on TV because we think that part of the meeting is exciting. And it's our school reports and they share what they're doing and what's new this year. And then we also have, for one example, Start With Hello programs. I think Lee started it and now I think it's at multiple sites across our district, which is really just, you know, it was based off of the Sandy Hook Promise or what happened in Sandy Hook, that tragedy. But as a result of that, it's just a way to get all kids to feel connected like they belong and that in their heart, they feel like they're enough, that they matter. So we also selected a facilitator and a cult consultant. It was so great. I got this email and it was just an example and I can't remember what it was now and I forwarded it to her as just an example of the numerous emails I get about this. And she was so excited. She goes, I'm going to do the happy dance. Can you send me more stuff? And I go, you're doing the happy dance. I'm doing the triple happy dance. So she's going to help us by putting together a task force, identifying the most urgent needs and then putting together to get the work. And I do want to remind, we did, I did invite people from the focus group to come join us on the interview panel. And I know some were hurt because all 40 probably really wanted to participate, but you cannot have an interview panel of 40. So if you're here, don't be hurt. So we did have some from there and I just tried to get a diverse group and then some administrators and two board members. So we're super excited. So without further ado, it is my honor and privilege to welcome up Danielle Nava Miharis. Danielle, we would love for you to say a few words. I know some of your history from your resume, but I'm going to let you share it. And so if you could share, but they'll want to know. Like I know you've been in the human relations field for 23 years. You worked for numerous companies in helping schools and districts. And I know you once even played a part working with Guam back, I think, in the 90s, in case people weren't sure. But I did not recognize her when she came in, so that, that, yeah, that did not, that was not how she got this, but I do, would let, I would love for her to have this opportunity to share.
Board members, thank you so much. Executive Committee, community. I know there's some of you that were in the room with me when I interviewed. Thank you for taking your time. So I'm thrilled. I'm actually nervous. I speak for a living and I'm really nervous just standing here in this community because I have been around for a long time. I've worked in districts for over 20 years, first as a teacher and decided that's not where my gifts and talents were supposed to be had and developed. And I went another route in education. I did work very briefly with Los Alamitos High School in the early 90s. I told Dr. Crop, thank you for dating me. But I, I will say this, I said this outside the interview and I, I'll say it tonight, that the work that Los Al Unified is going to do is groundbreaking. There is no other district who's been able to create something across the district. I've worked in so many. We've done several schools within a district, but we've never actually had a concerted effort at the district level. So I am so thrilled to be part of this work. I do want to introduce my, my two better halves, my husband Ray and our son Michael. They're here. They're going to excuse themselves soon because I, we, you already heard my son giving a little shout out.
He's giving you a shout out.
He was giving me a little shout out. I will say this, I come to you with yes experience and some content expertise, but I come to you mostly with a ton of heart for this work. I've dedicated more than half my life to human relations work. I'm very proud of the work that I've been able to do with, mostly with my community and with students. They forever have changed my life. They've changed the trajectory of how I will raise my son. It's just been an incredible path and I'm so excited that I'm going to be able to work in a community that is already doing amazing work. And I hope that I am added value and support in continuing that work. So thank you very, very, very much.
Danielle, I know I speak for the whole board and we really welcome what you're going to do and how you're going to help us have a fresh set of eyes and be able to move some really important work forward. So thank you very much. Our next recognition is Dr. Crop and I will be recognizing the residents for Excellent School Committee Measure G Campaign endorsers and supporters. And I just want to say that way back, I was the chairperson for Measure K and I have a really good feel for what, how much work it took and what, what you guys have done and what you've done and put on the line and the extraordinary opportunity you're going to give this district. So we would like to recognize you. And Dr. Crop, how would you like to do that?
So, and if Nancy could also join us, can the three of us go?
Absolutely. Ooh, one by one.
You know, the board passed a resolution that we hope to never go out for a bond again as a, as a...
as a, as a, the closest thing you can do to a promise to the community, that if you agree and you vote to tax yourselves, that you pay to modernize a school, then we have to agree to budget to maintain those sites that have been modernized. And all of our sites have been fully modernized, but the high school. So that has, that has really always bugged me, to be brutally honest. And so, and I knew and I thought it was all good decisions and we did the best we could. And it really transforms education and does a great, great thing for our kids and our teachers and our staff and our community. So to pass Measure G is unbelievable and it took a lot of people and a lot of work. And they put their neck out and you know bonds are never unanimous. And so, you know, you had neighbors saying, how can you endorse that? And, you know, and I would hear stories, but this group of people, they stuck their neck out. We had people that went from, you can use my photo, and that's important, to you can use my name, and that's important, to people who spent literally hundreds of hours organizing phone banks, walks, precinct walks, meetings and all of that. So there's a range of people and we have a range of, that we really want to recognize. But before we give them a certificate and call their name, and we have a few specialists that, I want to make sure that I give everyone, Dr. Nia, a chance to say, but really from the bottom of my heart, I can't do it, you know, 20 times, thank you. What, what you did for our community and our kids is extraordinary.
I want to take, take this opportunity to thank all the committee members. We have spent, I'm not sure how many hours, at the CIF office, thank you so much, Rob, at everybody's houses, at the Rush Park and everywhere else there is. We started this process back in April and basically before we even started the process, we had meetings and different things already. So I do live here as well and the commitment that you guys have to the kids in this community. And I know a lot of you, your kids already finished or some of them are almost gonna be done, but you guys went beyond. It was nights, weekends, day, night, every single. I just can't thank you enough from the bottom of my heart. Thank you from all the students here at Los Al, and I just can't thank you and that's...
I already said my thank you, but I'll say it once again, thank you very much.
So I have a list here, you can only hope, right? And a stack here. So at the recess, if you don't get the right one, that's okay, I'll fix it. And then, alright, so, and then I started a list with who was gonna show and then people, I can't make it, I can't make it, so I'm winging it. If I leave you out, raise your hand, make a big scene and we'll call you up.
Dr. Crop, we should've just given him the blank ones like we do at, at high school and the name.
Good idea. Alright, I don't think he's here, but I'm just gonna read the names and if you are, walk up and then we'll all clap for that. So Eddie Keskey, who agreed to lend his name in the voter pamphlet. Emil George, who was a parent and also agreed to let us use his name as a chamber member. Jim Clissano is a realtor in CL Beach, he agreed to let us use his name in the voter pamphlet, pamphlet. Kevin Giddig is the president of Leif, a parent and has also agreed, is Kevin here tonight? So thanks Kevin and I have told him. Mike Verapapa is the mayor of CL Beach and he also agreed to let, he endorsed the bond, that's very important. I saw Shelley Hasselberry, Los Al City Council endorsed the bond, come on up Shelley. Thank you so much for coming. Tom Lemp, the CEO of Southland Credit. Yes, yes. Oh, come on. Thank you. And a Christmas. Tom Strance, who couldn't be here, retired executive director for the youth center, Rotary and other things. Tony DiMarco is the president of R C S D, he also endorsed the bond. Dick Ramsay, I saw you and Carol. Dick and Carol Ramsay, come on up. So you know, their kids have long graduated and most of their grandkids, but for them to be willing to go out on a limb and write a letter, knowing that they're gonna pay and not have their own children receive the benefits speaks volumes. Carol, thank you.
Thank you very much.
And she told me that they were shocked at the large picture that came out of it. She goes, oh, oh my gosh, it's so big. Thank you. I'm waiting on that one, that one, that one. Landry Fields, he's a Griffin graduate and he joined us on our committee, he's Landry Fields. Alright, then tell him he has to show up to get us a certificate. Not really, he doesn't start a grade, you can give it to him. Tom Mauder was one of the people on our Residents for Excellent Schools Committee and also a parent. Lorraine Navarro couldn't make it, but she's actually a next board member, was on our Residents for Excellent Schools Committee. And the next person on our Residents for Excellent Schools Committee, Sean Pay, come on up. Sean is also a parent and lives in our district obviously and is a member of Rotary and numerous other things. Wait on that one. Ann Vida, I think she's out of town, she was on the Residents for Excellent Schools. Rob, why God, he let it be him. Thank you. So you need a message. You do. But you know, this is when I knew Rob really loved Los Al or he just doesn't know how to say no yet, but we asked him to wear the shirts. So it was for Los Al, it was the ugliest shirt ever. It was not just yellow with a big old G on it. Not only did you have it on, Rob, your entire team did. Let's give it up for that. And then Beth Houghton, because she was the recent, the immediate past president of R C S D, but I really, sorry, R A J, but I really got that clue to call her up from our most loyal person here, a part of our, also on our...
Personnel Commission.
Personnel Commission, her husband Milton. So Beth Houghton, first, immediate past president of R A J. Come on up. We had two teachers that really went above and beyond, giving us, giving us, really talking to their kids and donated, what is with it? We need a recess. And so, we need cookies. So two teachers really encouraged students to come and help us campus and nothing works as well as students. So some people would engage with us, they did like to call me, they invited to their house for coffee even, but it was rarely to talk about the bond, I just want to point that out. I did do that, but it didn't, I didn't get to a lot of houses. And so, but two teachers, really coaches and administrators, there's a variety there, really went above and beyond and their students were amazing. One couldn't be here, he has a water polo game tonight, but Dave Carlson, history teacher, water polo coach at Los Al High School, can we clap for him anyway? The other one, a teacher and administrator of the arts, the choir kids showed up and so we want to thank David Moll and campus. Okay, now I have to get on the mic a second. So we have a certificate and a special gift for five people. So you know, when you have a team, there's always a, a small group, a core, that really goes above and beyond in extraordinary ways. And so I'm gonna call these five up, one at a time, but they really are just extraordinary. I just honestly, I'm not sure the bond would've passed without their efforts. So I don't know where they're at on that list, but I can see them. So we have our co-chairs of our Residents for Excellent Schools Committee and that is Brian Liebel and Dave Locke, come on up. And then we had, don't leave, just stay up here for now. And then we had two, two women that, oh my goodness, every single time we were at Rush Park, these are Saturdays and like, they have jobs and families, I don't know how they do it. And the phone banks and the canvassing, just there all the time and so it really moves me and from the bottom of my heart, I also would like to call up Teresa Blankenstein And then last, but certainly not least, he not only was on the Residents for Excellent Schools Committee, but he donated stuff and when Nancy started listing off all the stuff like the shirts and the printer words I don't know and signs and companies and storing them in his yard and dropping them off, hours and hours of work and resources in, in different areas. And so it is my pleasure to now call up Mr. Craig Cartosian. And so we are starting a new tradition here in Los Al. So, cause we think it'll be fun. So we have a very special sweatshirt that only the board can give out and that's for when community members or parents or families really just go above and beyond, so we hope you like it. But it's our famous sweatshirt, but only it's a different color and it says Unlimited Possibilities. So if it fits and it's the right size and you, we would like to embroider your name on it, but we didn't do that in case it's the wrong size. So this one I've got for Jody. This one, I have no idea. What size is it?
That's a large.
That must be, I don't know. Okay, well, let's just wait. It's only five.
Devil, devil.
Oh, I don't know.
Yeah. X-large. You don't even know what size we are.
It's a medium. I'm nervous now. I think this is you. But you know, if they don't get so what, then I can do the next size and we'll do it. Alright, thanks for this, you guys, this is our rock star team, everyone down the line.
Dr. Crop and Nancy Nye and I wanted to say that you are the hardest working administrators and every single person who was up here was, was out there at least 10 hours. So it, it was really a wonderful opportunity for PTA to see how hard we, you work and to involve us, so thank you.
And every single time you said, have them call me.
You want to say anything, Craig?
No.
Thank you once again from the bottom of our heart and we are really gonna look forward to the work going forward and I'm sure that you will all have an eagle eye on everything that is being done. So we are gonna go ahead and we are going to break into recess. Now, hold on just a second. So there are cookies, that's the really good part. The other part is if you are here as a family member of, or someone that was honored in Measure G, please stay because we want to make sure that we get Marlis' family taken some photos of and then we want all of Measure G's photos taken as well, correct? Did I miss anything?
Danielle.
And Danielle, thank you. And Danielle. And your family's still here, yay. So we'll go ahead and take a 10, a quick 10-minute recess for the rest of you, there are cookies out in the lobby.
I already ate your fudge.
Okay, I'm gonna bring our, our meeting back to order, please. And so the first thing that we usually do after recess, just to let the public know, there are two times that we have communication and participation. One is before we have workshops, which we started at four o'clock this afternoon. And then the second time is right after recess. And so we are now open for communication and so the first called, card I have is Mrs. Janine Ball, she's one of our wonderful high school teachers. Mrs. Ball.
Thank you so much. Sheri, I want to say thank you to you for your years of leadership, your decades of dedicated service to the district. I will miss you for not only your phone calls when you want to get the dirt on things, but often, which she does sometimes, which I enjoy also, but also your humor. We forget sometimes your great sense of humor and I'm really gonna miss your stories about your dating life.
Not me, cause maybe they'll be good stories.
I know, that's true. Instead of funny stories. We can, we can always hope for that. So anyway, thank you Sheri, really appreciate it. I want to say congratulations to Diana, welcome back, we're glad that you have your back and behalf of many of the teachers at the high school, the majority of the teachers at the high school, we're thrilled and thank you for being back with us. And Marlis, we're of course thrilled to have you. We're looking forward to working with the board in a spirit of collegiality and inclusiveness and we're very excited to be working with all of you, so thank you for that. I want to say thank you to Stan, who I think just walked out the door, that's Marlis' husband. Casey, her amazing son Stephanie from up above, for sharing their extraordinary mother and wife. And Marlis, I mostly to you say thank you for saying yes. We love you, thank you.
Our next cord, um, curd, card is Leslie Weaver, Weber, correct? Weber.
I'll just keep coming.
Thank you.
I wanted to sort of second what Janine said, congratulations on the elections and the reelection. This, I, I, I don't think, I shouldn't say I don't think, I, the high school, the district, I think was, was really galvanized with this election, which was exciting to see. I think the, the outcome was also exciting to see. As a teacher, I'm grateful, I'm grateful for a change in leadership and I'm grateful for hopefully a change in perspective. Our students haven't changed, our students' needs haven't changed. My, my desire to speak on behalf of the students hasn't changed. Typically when I talk, I mention what I'm doing in my class. So we're doing The Great Gatsby right now, which is, you know, the kids say the book is better, the movie's better than the book and they're so wrong. But one of the, one of the things that we talk about is, one of the ideas that we talk about is this concept of appearance versus reality. And it's really easy with social media, it's really easy sort of in the times that our kids are growing up in, to be able to address sort of this concept of appearance versus reality. And as faculty and administrators, I think that we've spent a lot of time with this concept as we've been walking through WASC this last year, decade, I'm not quite sure anymore. But as, as we've been walking through this, I would ask the board to continue to examine this theme or this concept as well. We have tremendous students, we have tremendous teachers, we have a tremendous community. I, I do truly, I thank God, I thank the heavens, I thank the universe for where my kid gets to go to school and where I get to teach. This is a unique environment, one that, that I, I am truly, truly grateful for. I will continue to contend though, that this A through G and pigeonholing our kids with A through G for All is, is not the answer. And Diana, when you came and spoke at the school, Marlis, when you came and spoke at the school too, or one of the things that both of you mentioned was this need for an increase in mental health services to our kids and mental health resources. And I would assert that, that yes, our kids need more, but what they also need more of is more opportunities. And if we keep trying to pigeonhole them with A through G, we're going to need more mental health resources because kids are gonna keep button their heads up against the wall and feeling like they don't fit in. I have been given an incredible opportunity this year with 33 kids. I think that those 33 kids have benefited from being in my classroom, God, I hope so. In, in, in many ways, I think they have. I have been able to build up their confidences, I have been able to form relationships with them. We have been able to slow things down, address things, meet some of their deficiencies along the way and I am sort of continually surprised at what some of the deficiencies are. And it breaks my heart as a parent and an educator that they have gotten this far and felt this way and have found, have encountered so little success upon entering high schools. Our elementary schools and our middle schools have done a tremendous job in terms of intervening for our kids or intervening with our students. It's where the high school that, it's, things seem to stop. I know that there are more than 33 kids at the high school who need more and I'm going to continue to ask for that and fight for that and advocate for them. So I think Diana, you- So I think Diana, you mentioned that it's the kids who don't always have the voice. I'm going to continue to be that voice, so I'll keep you posted on what I'm doing in my classroom. Thank you.
And our last speaker, unless there's anybody asking who's a card, will be Jody Robanis. You have a couple of things I'm hearing you might talk about.
I still haven't come to grips that Sherri Crop is leaving, so I won't talk about that. No, I just want to kind of capitalize on what you said, keeping the main thing the main thing of students. And Chris Flassack, I think, is still in the room here. In October, we had a wonderful international walk and bike to school day and I don't think it's an understatement that we had thousands of participants just celebrating, walking and biking to school. We got a Safe Kids grant, I'm not sure that there was any money associated with that, but there certainly were some wonderful resources and all five of our elementary schools were in full force. In fact, we shut down a few streets in Rosmore walking to school. With that said, it seems very strange to me that on the consent calendar for the Orange County Supervisors is the item that says, basically is to adopt the Orange County Traffic Committee report and they want to adopt alternative two. Now, I would like to mention that alternative one is to leave the Rosmore bike lane as it is, which was started in the late 1970s, instituted in 1980, where on the easterly side of Foster and St. Hedwig's, there's parking restrictions on school days in the morning and then on the western side, it's in the afternoon. And it is for traffic, children to use the bike lane. On their consent calendar is the motion to adopt a resolution and then to put in, and I'll talk about that resolution, and then to put in something called a share lane. And I know you can't really see it, but the share lane that will go in, there's no room for it. They're going to actually remove the bike lanes as they are, cars will park on both sides and then in the existing street, no extra space, there's going to be a share lane where the kids are supposed to bike both ways. So if there's a car coming on that side, the car's supposed to stop and I just, I can't imagine. I want to mention also is the resolution that they're looking to adopt. And basically the resolution has two whereas and one is that, one of the wheres is that there was a traffic committee hearing on this issue. It doesn't say that the traffic committee did not adopt the report and it's very frustrating to me because, yeah, they had this hearing, but it wasn't adopted. And then therefore is to rescind the 1979 resolution that put the bike lane in place. So I'm sorry that this is so long, but what I wanted to do is make you aware that a week from today, 9:30, at the Orange County Supervisors meeting, there will be a time to ask for this item, it's item nine, to be taken off the consent calendar and for discussion. So Michelle Steele is currently the supervisor chair and I know this is something that she's kind of been pressured for a few people from Rosmore. I want to also mention is that this resolution came to the Orange County Supervisors from the, what's called the RHA. It's, the name is the Rosmore Homeowners Association, but it's really more like a garden club. It's, there's no, they're not elected officials. Two bodies that have voted in a resolution to support the bike lane, one is the RCSD, which is elected, and then actually this group did, you supported the PTA resolution at your March meeting 2017. Meg said, "Who doesn't want safety for kids? It's a no-brainer," was the words that she used. So Meg has already said that she might be willing to go to that meeting and I thank you. And I hope this is the last time I have to talk to you about this issue. I do have other things I want to share with you, but please show up to that meeting and let's keep that bike lane in Rosmore for, keeping the main thing the main thing, kids and safety. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jody. And thank you once again for all of your work on Measure G. Did you have anything you wanted to add, Dr. Crop?
No, I think I probably shouldn't, I'm going to pass, but thank you, Ms. I was going to say, actually, I will say one thing, but I might be a little off. So Andrea, if you could just share the survey we also gave to our families.
Yeah, prior to RCSD taking action on the resolution, Melissa Davis was actually in the director of safety position and we came and presented a survey that we gave to all parents in Los Alamos Unified and there was a very high percentage, it's been two years now, so I can't recall.
Like 89% or something.
Absolutely, of parents stating that their child did, at least one day a week when weather permitted, either walk or bike to school if they lived in the Rosmore area. So that, we use that as a substantiating fact to help urge RCSD to help us protect the bike lane, as we know many of our students do walk and bike to school and we've been encouraging them for the last two years to increase that activity as well.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Reed. Thank you, Dr. Crop. So we will go into our consent calendar now. This is the very exciting part of the meeting. I'm amazed there are so many still here. And so we, there we go. We are going to, there is, I know I want one poll, which is W. Does anybody else have any polls? So when we look at our consent calendar, we read it and these are things that are normal parts of doing business and we usually do one motion and either, and vote on that motion, whatever that motion may be. And then also there are times that there are things that we either want to have further discussion about or that we may also want to highlight and so we poll those items at that point in time. So I would like a motion to have consent items A through V and X through KK. And do we have a second? Great. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? A through V and X through KK have voted, been voted unanimously, four zero. The next one was a W, so 12 W, I asked to poll. And so I will make a motion that we vote on 12 W. Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Any discussion?
We should discuss it.
Thank you. And the reason that, the reason I polled this item was because it is an approval of a contract for Alternative Fuel Today, which is an engineering design company that does our CNG fuel dispensers and our buses. And so I'm just very proud of the fact that staff works really hard to find these grants that takes our old diesel buses off of the road and puts these new clean energy buses on the road and also gets them for, like, very inexpensively because they go and they find the grants. And so I see that Mr. Eklav is in the room and I want to thank your department for that and for that great work and Dr. Yin for that as well, because I think those are little things that people don't see that we do every day, because we are, we do want to be conscientious about not only our budget, but also about the kind of vehicles we drive our students around in. Any further discussion?
I just think that if the public hasn't heard it before, as we put, transitioned our fleet over to this, we actually, part of this that you were voting on is to increase the fuel dispensers and the fact that we have a fueling station that we used to, when we first started, have to drive over to Long Beach to fuel the buses. So now it's much more equitable, now we have people actually coming to fuel vehicles in our location. So it gives us some economy of scale and it just shows our leadership in that role.
And it takes a long time to fill a CNG.
It does.
Because you have to let it settle. So it's not like pumping gasoline because you're pumping gas.
So that was reason. So we have a first and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes four zero. We will now move on to approval of services agreement contract with Leadership Associates to conduct a superintendent search. And we had a workshop earlier today from a organization called Leadership Associates and they have helped us in the past when we have looked for a superintendent. That was over eight years ago, I do believe. And so we are going to be getting that search again. So I need a motion to approve that?
I don't think anyone wants to move.
Oh, no. Yeah, I know.
What happens if we don't?
Oh, I'm still going to retire.
Now you're playing.
I am just kidding, but, no, I'm not, but yes, I am.
Yes, yeah, no, you're not. Okay, I will move approval of our contract with Leadership Associates as presented.
Second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Any further discussion? I just, I just do want to add, in case anybody wasn't at the workshop earlier, that really the community will be asked their input and that's one thing that Leadership Associates will do, is that they'll do a survey, there'll be an online survey as well as there will be focus groups and being able to ask what we're looking for in a superintendent.
We need the information and it comes, I believe it's better when a third party asks people than when I'm in Target now, somebody, what they want in a superintendent, because they're going to either tell me what they really believe or perhaps they'll hold back a little bit or, you know, we want legitimate, honest information from our communities, you know, our community members, our parents, our staff, and it's better to have a third party do it. And we will have, like you said, an online version, so if you can't get to one of the meetings, we can get us a lot of feedback.
Yes. So all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Passes four zero. The next will be the approval of the governance handbook and, Dr. Crop, I'm supposed to call on you.
You are, because I deeply apologize to the board that we worked on this governance handbook back in July and so I just want people to know that for eight years in a row, the board has met for a day in the summer and to create these protocols with the facilitator and so they've been, they've evolved every year with agreements and things. We went, ah, that isn't working too much, that worked well, and I've always really appreciated that professional relationship. And then when Marlis was elected, I went to give her the copy of the handbook and I realized it did not have a board approval date. So this is not a new document, it's the one you created last July in our day together that I really need to get formally board approved.
Thank you, Dr. Crop.
Well, I'll move approval then.
Awesome.
I'll second.
Second?
We have a discussion.
Yes.
Okay, so for me, I think that, Dr. Crop spent a lot of time talking with me about this and we went through it. I just would like, I'm going to abstain from it because I didn't help write it and I still have questions and I would love an opportunity to have some workshop so that I could understand better the meaning of parts of it and how it affects my interaction with people, so.
That's wonderful. That's awesome. So when we vote, you'll go ahead and you'll just say that, we'll say, we'll take a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions?
Yes, aye.
Any ayes? So three ayes and one abstention.
And as I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Crop, but that's something that's been a working document that when we get together, just so Marlis and maybe you've had the discussion, so that it's something we've been doing and it changes and it evolves.
Every year.
Together every year.
Yep.
So you'll have that opportunity to give input and feedback and we'll make good decisions and we always are, things are always moving and changing, so.
Thank you.
The next action item we have is CSBA Delegate Assembly nomination for David Boyer. So CSBA is the organization that we are a part of as a board and they help us with our governance, they help us with legislation, they help us with a variety of things. I'll probably let Mrs. Gattulie say a word or two about that. And we have delegates throughout the county that then go to CSBA and help do some of that great work and there are some open slots for that right now. And I am very excited to nominate David Boyer for that position. Now then he'll go up for reelection for the whole, the whole body?
We should do that in March, I think, February or March is when we have the election.
Yeah, March 30, beginning April 1st. So it's got to be before.
Before, it's something.
Before that two terms. So I would like to make a, I just forgot the word. Motion, thank you. I'd like to make a motion to nominate Dave Boyer for CSBA Delegate Assembly.
I'll second.
Awesome.
Can I discuss something?
Yes.
Dave, I'm director of our Orange County, Region 15, so I don't need to be, I've been on the board, I've been on Delegate Assembly and the Board of Director for several years and I don't, I'm elected actually from all the delegates, so I don't need to run. And we have not had anyone other than myself from Los Alamos for as, basically as long as I can remember. And there are unnamed, I will, they will remain unnamed, school districts that actually have three members.
Oh.
I know, and I'm thinking, I would like somebody from Los Alamos. I know Diana thought about it for a while, but her work life changed and it wasn't going to work out. And so when Dave mentioned that he was interested, I thought, this is a good time and I would really like to have someone other than myself from Los Alamos, because in my position, I will always give people my opinion whether they really want it or not, but because I am a director, some, I just feel like I have to take a step back sometimes because that's not necessarily my role. So I'm really glad that Dave wants to do this and I, hopefully he'll be elected.
Yeah.
But we have open seats, so it's a good time.
That's awesome. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four zero. We move on to our next action item, which is the second reading and approval of an updated board policy related to bullying. We had our first reading at our last meeting and, Dr. Pulver.
Thank you, Madam President, esteemed members of the board. Both policies tonight, we're bringing forward our recommendations from county guidance and our legal services. This is the second reading of our bullying policy. The update really includes the district making available the California Department of Education's anti-bullying module to staff on a yearly basis as a preventative measure for anti-bullying. That's the only update within that policy.
Thank you very much. Do I have a motion?
I'll second.
I'll second.
Great. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We will move on to the second reading of an approval of an updated board policy on nondiscrimination in employment. Back to Dr. Pulver.
Thank you, Madam President, esteemed members of the board. Once again, this is just the second reading, just some technical changes based upon our legal guidance for our nondiscrimination policy and then we'll also make a few changes in the regulations as well.
Do I have a motion?
I'll move approval.
Second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We move on to the next item, action item, which is approval of supplemental materials and, Mrs. Reed.
Madam President, esteemed members of the board, tonight we bring forward four German II readers of supplemental materials. These four books have been on preview for the last 30 days and so our recommendation is to approve these four readers for German II.
Thank you very much. Do I have a motion?
I'll move approval.
And I will second, even though I'm unable to read them. So I will go. And I know Meg tries to read everything, but yes.
Except French. You have read, you have read the French. So all of the, everyone in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four zero. The next is approval of textbooks. Mrs. Reed.
Madam President, esteemed members of the board, in partnership for German II, this is the accompanying German II textbook that we are also recommending approval that has been on preview for the past 30 days.
I was just going to ask that question. So yes, textbooks come to the board, then we put them on display so anybody can come by and look at them and give us their opinion on them and then we go ahead and actually vote on them. So I will make a motion that we approve these textbooks. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes four zero. The next item is the presentation and approval of the first interim budget. Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you, President.
Diana, you. Tonight I am happy to present the updated first interim report for the 2018-19 school year. Want to give an economic update of what's happening. According to UCLA, they have this new term called a 3-2-1 economic forecast. The projected gross domestic product growth in 2018 is 3% and 2% in 2019 and it's 1% in 2020. So that means they're projecting that the economy will be slowing down starting next year. And as that the economy slows, there's a chance of a recession that will increase. They're projected right now at this point, a 1/6 chance of a recession in 2019 and a 1/3 chance of a recession in 2020. Regarding the federal policy, UCLA 4K- Regarding the federal policy, UCLA forecasts an increase in the deficit from four hundred billion dollars in two thousand and fifteen to one point four trillion by two thousand and twenty-two at this point. And Federal Reserve is expected to raise interest rates in December of two thousand and eighteen and four more times in two thousand and nineteen. The wild card at this point is the trade policy. As you guys often have been seeing on the news, the tariff on the Chinese imports is a big issue at this point. The trade deal with the, with Mexico and Canada has been reached, thank goodness, um, the NAFTA North America Fair Trade Agreement at this point. The forecast for California, California has always been a little bit better than the overall economy in the U.S. We're projecting a three point five percent growth, um, from July two thousand and seventeen to July two thousand and eighteen versus the two point five percent, um, for the country. The state has also added three million jobs since the bottom of the recession. However, right, uh, raising interest rate at this point could threaten the expansion of the California economy. The effects of possible recession, as has, has been mentioned so far, and I think we all remember the dot-com bust back in two thousand and one. And so things could change quickly overnight. At this point, School Services is projecting the forecast of a three point one percent cost of living adjustment in two thousand and nineteen, twenty, that's our next school year. The Legis- Legislative Analyst Office also projects the, about half of the increase of the, increasing the cost of living will be absorbed by step and column adjustments, special education contributions, utility, transportation, and other costs that is going up. School Services is also projecting that many school district will have to implement some kind of budget cuts in two thousand and nineteen, twenty. We do believe that we will be able to cover the increases cost with cost of living adjustment at this point. So what has been changed since the board adopted the budget back in June? We were notified that we are receiving the low-performance student block grant. These are funds for students identified as low performing on the state language arts or mathematics assessments who are not otherwise, otherwise identified for supplemental grant funding under LCFF or eligible for special education services. So they are not qualified for either of the services at this point. The dollar amount that we are allocated is three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. And intervention and student support will be through educational services with Andrea Reed's office. We're also getting a one-time block grant called the Classified School Employee Professional Development Block Grant. The priorities for professional development of school safety plans. The current allocation is a forty-nine thousand dollars, which is equivalent to a hundred and seventy-seven dollar per classified full-time equivalent. And this is a one-time funding for two thousand and eighteen, nineteen. So as you see in this chart at this point right here, we are now, we are already, okay, oh, this thing's not working. But we are already at a hundred percent of, um, funding in current year. So this means anything from this point forward would just be the cost of living adjustment only. So prior years, we got the COLA adjustment, we also got the LCF, the, the gap funding. The gap at, right now currently, it's, we're at a hundred percent. So there's gonna be no more of the additional funding that we have seen in the many years in the past. The CalPERS increases, this is for the, um, people in the classified group. As you can see, um, the two thousand and thirteen, fourteen, the employer contribution was at eleven point four-four-two percent. Currently is at eighteen percent already and it's projected to be at twenty-seven percent in two thousand and twenty-four, twenty-five. And for CalSTRS, this is for the certi- certificate, um, group. The employer contribution has increased from two point two, sorry, eight point two-five percent to current year at sixteen point two-eight percent. That is, has doubled. And it's continued to go up every year after this. And for the certificate of staff, the individuals who are working as well, they are also absorbing the additional increase from the eight percent, um, in two thousand and thirteen, fourteen, to currently at ten point two-five percent. So if you think about this, for every hundred dollars a certificate staff teacher to bring home, they have to pay ten dollar to the STIRS retirement system. That's quite a bit as well, if you wanna think it that way. We have, the district have to pay the sixteen dollars to match that. So just think that way. So in.
But they're gonna get it back. That's a good thing.
Well, as long as there's money in the system, as long as there's money in the system. So, and this chart here will show you how much we have contributed from two thousand and thirteen, fourteen, the increases. So both it STIRS and PERS combined in two thousand and thirteen, fourteen was four point three million dollars. This year currently is at ten point eight million dollars. And two years from now, it will be thirteen point three million. That is triple of what we started and this is not even ten years. If you look at this, what other things have literally tripled over eight years? That time period. If you think, look, look at that. So the, despite, the increase has been small. It's about a million, a million, at least a million dollar a year for our district, just to pay for this.
And Dr. Nien, correct me if I'm wrong, but that comes out of our general fund?
It comes from the cost of living adjustment that we receive, yes, general fund.
And that doesn't include the money for Gatsby forty-five that we're trying to put aside, that includes the medical, N plus medical.
That's, I have a slide to show you that, yes.
Oh, good. I'm, I just can't wait to add it in.
This is just the retirement system.
Yeah, all right.
For the eighteen, nineteen first interim, these are the bu- budget assumptions. Um, the cost of living adjustment for currently is at three point seven percent, is projected to go down to two point five-seven and then two point six-seven in two thousand and twenty-one, twenty-two. STIRS, as you see the numbers I presented earlier, as well as PERS, we are receiving a one-time dollar of one point seven million dollars for this year. And as we are projecting to receive, there's nothing in this, at this point for that one-time dollars. Our current interest rate is about one point eight-one percent and as interest rate go up, we'll be adjusting those out years based on what we receive from the county. So this is the, the chart that Dave was asking. So this is the projected revenue versus, um, the projected expenditures for current year only. For current year, we are projected to receive an additional about four million dollar increase, three point nine-five. There's the ongoing expenses of the step and column for both certificate and classified, as well as the STIRS cost and as well as the PERS, additional PERS cost for the employer portion, and then the increase in health and welfare. This totals to about three point three-five million dollars for current year. So this year, we're not, we are good in this, in a sense, we're not deficit spending according to this so far. And based on the state requirements, the guideline from the county, as well as current district assumptions, we do have the reserve sitting at six percent as the board has directed. There are other issues that are at, at the table with the state economy and forecast at this point, and as well as the federal policies as we have seen. Enrollment is a big factor for our district. We are at the luxury since, you know, we are Los Al and we do get some kids, we do get quite a bit of kids to come. The federal impact day is a big one for us. We will be talking to the newly elected, um, staff as well, the new congressperson as well, to help us to maintain that we receive the federal impact day for our district. We do have to protect against unanticipated budget expenditures. There are things that could happen that we have, must set aside money for. And cash flow, that's a huge, it's huge. And as well as we're going into selling the bond, our credit rating is exceptional. But we need to make sure our cash flow also align with that, so when we go and sell the bond, that we can get the best rating for the district as well as get the best rate for everything else together. And that concludes my presentation and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
I'm just gonna say these things 'cause it's a hammer I use all the time. Um, the full funding that they talk about with LCFF gets us back to two thousand and seven. I do not believe anybody would want to have the same amount of money they had in two thousand and seven, 'cause you cannot buy the same things that you could then. So full funding is not full funding. And Prop ninety-eight was originally created to be a floor, not a ceiling. And I know everybody in the room agrees with me, but I just keep saying those things to everybody. So I don't like your report, but it's not your fault.
Nancy, there, there's, uh, just a question for me, just to help and hopefully we'll all get refreshed on this. But on these block grants, these one-time, like the low-performance student block grant for three hundred and eighty-five thousand, that money, does that have to be spent in a specific category on those specific students? And so it's like, it's not like we can throw the general fund to help offset STIRS or PERS or anything.
You cannot do that.
It has to only go to, to tho- to that program or like the classified grant for.
Yes, and.
Training. It has to just go to training, right?
Yes, and so by March, uh, we will be working with educational services, they'll be bringing to a plan for your approval for, for those, for those kids. And we have about three years to spend that money, um, for services for those students.
Yes, Dr. Crop. I could just add, if I could, Madam President, that, um, just to thank you to Dr. Pulver as our negotiator, because it really is a team. And I see back there that we have Mrs. Stacy Schmidt, who is our lead negotiator with LAEA. And it really is the work of our, um, through the IBB process to try to make this happen. Because although we give you what the worst and the best could be, notice we did make it okay this year with the STIRS, the PERS, the small COLA, the step and column, we're good. And that just wouldn't have happened, but we have, uh, really worked hard through that process. And so I just don't wanna take a second, 'cause I just saw her sitting back there and in the crowded room. And so really, Stacy, thank you for being here and, and Dr. Pulver and Dr. Nien, so thanks.
I just have another comment about that block grant that we, excuse me, that we received. Um, I was working with CSBA to get that passed and what is, it's a benefit to every school district in the state of California with additional funds. While with, um, LCFF, they have specific requirements for the students in order to get money for your LCAP. I hate talking in acronyms, but, um, for the, the LCAP. Uh, and this was to look at the pers- the, your lowest percentage of students regardless of their socioeconomic, their, um, their ethnicity or anything like that. It was like, look at these kids who, and this, and I think this is great, who are not succeeding. We need to help the kids that are not succeeding. So I was really glad when this passed, 'cause I knew we would receive the money also, because every school has kids that need help and.
In their system.
You know, support them. So I was, yeah, but I understand, it would be nice to be able to put it some way, but we're kids first, so that we'll have more children succeeding.
Thank you, Meg. And then one other quick, quick question for me. So the, our one-time, when we get one-time monies like that, we always make sure that we're not funding something that will be ongoing, correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay. Thank you, thank you very much. So, um, I believe, so this is a presentation, is this an action item?
Yes.
It is. So we have to, I need a motion to accept the first interim report?
I'll so move.
I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Four zero. Um, we now, Dr. Nien, you're gonna be very busy for a few minutes.
Thank you for all your work and.
Yes, absolutely.
Everybody on your staff. I know it takes a lot of, lots of Excel spreadsheets.
Elvia probably worked hard on it too.
Elvia, yes.
Thank you. Great presentation, wonderfully done. Um, so now that you're back. So, um, our next item is the rejection of all proposals to cancel the request for proposals for pre-construction and lease, lease-back services for Los Alamos High School, yada, yada, yada. Would you like to explain that to us?
Yes, so we had the proposal out on the market and there were some comments about the, uh, a, about the proposal. So we decided we should all work with attorneys and we firm up the proposal a little bit better so that everybody had the same opportunity to be on the project. So we have, first have to reject that proposal and then we will be bringing the, the new, the revised, uh, leases back pre-qualification.
Great. Thank you. And that's further on this agenda, correct?
Uh, right after this item, yes.
Thank you very much. So, um, I need a motion to reject the, all proposals?
I'll so move.
A second?
I'll second.
All those in favor? Aye. Pass it, uh, passes four zero. The next one would be to adopt the Los Alamos Unified School District Resolution Number. This is going to replace what we just, uh, rejected. So I need a motion, please?
So, so I'll make a move, I'll move approval of the corrected, updated, new resolution.
Wonderful.
Second.
Um, this is a roll call. And so, uh, Dr. Pulver?
Mr. Boyer? Aye. Mrs. Hill?
Aye.
Ms. Cattulli?
Aye.
Mrs. Davidson?
Aye.
The next one is an adoption of Resolution Number twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, twenty of the Board of Los Alamos Unified School District approving the amended reinstated bylaws for the, um, school district for the Oversight Committee, for the Bond Oversight Committee. Uh, Dr. Nien?
Yes, as you heard in the board workshop, we are bringing this tonight for your approval. The application is in front of you, you should have a copy right there. This will be posted on the website tomorrow and advertised in the news, in the local newspapers. The deadline will be on January eleventh. Thank you so much.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. So I need a motion to approve this resolution?
I'll so move.
I'll second.
I just, I like to.
Discussion?
Yeah, I just would like to say, um, if anybody's interested in serving on our Bond Oversight Committee, please check our website. Uh, we, it's very specific, um, according to the rules who can be on it. So if you think you have any kind of an interest, I'm really would like you to fill out that application.
Why could I ask a question too?
Yes, absolutely.
The advertisement in the newspaper, what does that consist of? Uh, 'cause you know, sometimes they have that thing where you just put it in a little, is it?
Yeah, so we'll be, yeah, it will be Los Alamos, you know, inviting community members to apply for the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee. Please go to the website or call. So we'll have our website, um, we already talked to technology. We'll have, when you first log in, it will be a big, right there to the right-hand side. We already know where we're gonna put it. Then you just go ahead and go there to download or, or you can call our office and we'll be happy to email you, um, or mail you the application.
It's usually the size of like a business card.
Yes, it's not gonna.
And it'll be in the newspapers. And then we're also gonna send an email to all of our families and our key communicators. But the ad, you can kinda see it, it's like a business card size.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
I think you're thinking of the fictitious.
The legal.
Yeah, yeah.
Awesome. So this is another roll call item.
It is. Mr. Boyer? Aye. Mrs. Hill?
Aye.
Ms. Cattulli?
Aye.
Mrs. Davidson?
Aye.
Wonderful, thank you. Let's move forward, Dr. Nien. So the approval of the new job description for Transportation Ops, um, Operations Supervisor, Dr. Pulver?
Thank you, Madam President, esteemed members of the board. This is a new position that is aligned with our current, uh, Maintenance Supervisor, so they'll be on an equal footing. We have our current Maintenance Supervisor who is retiring and, uh, we think it's important to make that position, who currently oversees transportation, to make it a true Transportation Supervisor. The job description was approved at our Personnel Commission last Wednesday.
Thank you very much, Dr. Pulver. Um, so I'll make a motion that we approve this new job description?
I'll second.
All those in favor? Uh, any, any discussion? Sorry. I keep forgetting that part, I'm just ready to move.
I know, you're just moving to the end.
No discussion?
Yeah.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
I also know you'll all speak up.
Yeah, that's true.
Uh, the approval of a ru- uh, revised job description of a mechanic.
Thank you, Madam President, esteemed members of the board. Just a minor revision to our job description for the mechanic. Uh, they need to qualify to be able to drive a bus, uh, on, on the plane of hire so that they can repair the bus properly and take it for a test drive.
That makes a great deal of sense. Um, I will so move that we approve this job description?
I'll second. We're snoozing here.
Um, any discussion? I, I do wanna say that, uh, Dr. Pulver earlier said that, uh, and I assume this one was also by the Personnel Commission. And the Personnel Commission is a separate commission that looks at our items that are for our, um, our. Classified, thank you. It's, it's been a long day. Uh, for the cla- our classified employees and looks at those job descriptions and helps and improves them and a variety of other things as well. So we really appreciate their work. Um, so I have a first and a second. And all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Four zero. We're now moving on to approval of warrants. So warrants are the checkbook of the district. And I believe sixty-eight pages today? Something like that. And so it is our responsibility to go through and. And, and privilege. And to, um, read every one of them. If we have questions, uh, we send them in and then we get clarification of those questions. And so, uh, um, I would like to move that we approve warrants as presented.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Any discussion?
Just that I was completely astounded. I said, "What's a warrant?", and she was, I went, "Oh, my gosh."
It is overwhelming when you first look at the list of everything.
Yeah, and I've been on the board 18 years, and I still send in warrant questions, because I'm not familiar with the vendors, I don't know what this is for, I don't understand it, so join the, I don't understand.
Yes. So all those in favor? I do believe...
Yeah.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay. Those opposed. The next, we're looking at the acceptance of donations, acceptance of donations. This is where I speak slowly and carry a big stick. The acceptance of donations, we have a very, very generous community, and this community donates to a variety of our different schools, and this doesn't even really reflect everything that has been donated. So, we're very, very grateful for all that has been given, and year-to-date is over a million dollars. That's a lot, December.
And probably another million in boosters.
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, the boosters at the high school.
Yes. So, I'd like a motion to accept those?
I'll move.
A second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye? Opposed? Moves four zero. The next, we are going to combine together, and that's our Classified Personnel Report and our Certificated Personnel Report. Dr. Pulver?
Thank you, Madam President, and to members of the board. The certificated and classified personnel report represent the actions that we've taken in HR since our last board meeting.
I will move approval of the classified and certificated personnel reports as presented.
I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? No discussion, because I didn't give us that opportunity. The next, we'll move on to communications, and generally what we do in communication is that we, we discuss the things that we have been to as part of our responsibility as board members, and anything else that we want to share with the public. So I will start with Dr. Boyer, I mean Dave Boyer.
Wow.
You got to be a doctor. It has promoted you.
First of all, I just want to congratulate you, Diana, on your reelection.
Thank you.
And, and welcome Marla to the board for reelection as well. I want to thank all the board members here, you know, and Jeff included, Jeff, Diana, Meg and I, and Karen, who's not here, who all put our names on the ballot to support Measure G. And I, and it was a real risk for all of us, and it's always tough to tax yourself, but when I've been to the high school and I've seen the lipstick on the pigs, shall I call it, and see that we have 50-year-old infrastructure and things, and the things, and some of those portables are just not, we can't even pay anybody to take them away, we're going to have to pay someone to take them away, we can't get rid of them, it's going to be awesome to get the work done. And we've been good with the other bond and the other money we passed, and I know I have great faith in Nancy and her staff, that we're going to get this done, and get it done quick, and get it done on time and on budget, and I know how hard we're going to work for that. So I just want to say thank you to the community, and I'm glad we supported and recognized all those folks that helped support us for Measure G. And welcome to another four years for the two of you, and your husbands, I talked to them both about a support group for tonight. They're going to start that. And I also realize I am now the only male on the school board, so that is a whole nother dynamic that will be interesting for me. Also, and we'll talk about it, I got to attend the CSBA conference, that was a, I thought that was a great team-building event for us, and always learn lots of things, I've passed some things off to Dr. Nian from the vendors, and always learning things about, one thing I really learned about was grants and sustainability, and we're doing some things with CNG, there's some things about electric cars and solar, and all kinds of grants and crazy stuff out there that can make you nuts trying to figure it all out, but there are things out there, and we seem to do a pretty good job of looking at all of that. The state of the state was interesting to listen to, and to learn that they really don't have a plan, as they're going into, into session now with the supermajority, so we'll have to see. And it was discouraging to hear them say that no one really wants to serve on the Education Committee in Sacramento. I found that very discouraging, and that it's become a hot potato politically, and that people don't want to serve on that, because it's so, it's so seen, and it's so important. So with the new state superintendent, and with the new, with the new, new session going in place, I just hope that they'll, that they'll get it together and really help. And so that's one of the reasons I want to be on the CSBA and get more involved, because I think, you know, we are 48 in funding, and I don't know why we can't move that up the ladder a little bit. I attended the Los Alamos Chamber breakfast. Dr. Kraup was there, I sat next to her at the breakfast. It was, it was wonderful, because our students showed up in choque choir. They sang a cappella, because there was a small malfunction with the keyboard, which Diana and I, or Cheryl and I saw, but didn't bother us, and no one really noticed, and they just did a phenomenal job. And then, I attended choque choir Saturday at the matinee, and got to sit next to David Molokamp's parents, which is always awesome, they're from the, from the Illinois area, and so that was awesome. And I loved David and Moana's job with that choir, and their, the special job they did with a dedication to the tragedy in Pittsburgh, I thought it said a lot. And it just was phenomenal. And we have our own Los Alroquettes. I had not, was phenomenal. So to have a roquette come out and actually teach, that was just, I was blown away. So I, every time I go, I just go, "How can it get better?", and it just gets better and better and better. And so, I'm going to get off my, this, I know tomorrow, there's, we're missing the drama performance tonight, I know tomorrow, there'll be a Rat Pack jazz group on Thursday night. I've got tickets to go see the show on Friday night with orchestra. So I want to wish everybody a happy holiday, a Merry Christmas, a happy Hanukkah, and time with your family, and as we have this new break, and we've changed our calendar, I'm hearing lots of positive feedback of the thought of, "Hey, I'll get my finals done, and I can go enjoy my break", or, "Hey, I don't have to beat my kids over the head to get that report done or something when I get back from break", and teachers going, "Wow, I just do my grades, and I'm done. I don't have to worry about when I get back." So, to everybody have a, have a, have a happy holiday, and best safe holiday, and we'll see you in the new year.
Thank you very much, David. Mrs. Cattulli?
Okay. We frequently tend to go to the same things. I did also attended the CSBA, their annual education conference, and I was very pleased with some of the sessions that I went to. Sometimes in the past, I have felt that they didn't offer a wide enough variety of classes for people who are interested in different things, and I felt that this year they had done a really good job of having a wide variety of classes. I did go up earlier, because like I mentioned before, I'm on the CSBA Board of Directors, excuse me. Andrew breathed on me, and I caught his cold. So now it's catching up again, the end of the day, it really comes on. The Board of Directions and our Delegate Assembly, so I was able to participate in that. I also saw the choir holiday show, and I'm getting to the point where if I don't see that show, Christmas can't start in our family, so it was a great evening. And we went to the chamber, and it was really great. And I also was lucky enough to be able to participate in our human relations interviews for the people who wanted to be our consultant. And I love participating on the interviews, almost just to make sure we have a good quality of candidates coming in. I realize I do not necessarily have the expertise to make a final decision on some of the positions that we would be hiring, but I, you can just tell the quality of the people, and again, we had a very good poll. And so I have great things that are going to be coming here, and I was really glad that I was able to be part of that group. I do have an ROP meeting tomorrow, and we will be having our intern report also, and I've already read it, and we're doing fine in ROP financially, so that part is good. So we're still, you know, going on ahead with our finances and ROP. And I want to wish everyone a really wonderful holiday season, regardless of what you celebrate, it is a time of love and compassion and peace, and I think we all need to have that in our life. And I do want to congratulate Diana on her reelection, and I want to give a warm welcome to Marla to the table.
Thank you, Meg.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Cattulli. Mrs. Davidson?
Well, every, this is all, everything is new to me, so I, I'm really deeply appreciative of everybody here who's been so welcoming. The San Francisco Conference was completely enlightening, not enlightening in the sense that I now have all of this knowledge, enlightening about everything that I don't know, and I have, I need to learn. But what I really want to thank all of you that were there is that you were incredibly embracing, and, and took care of me, and helped me understand things, and made sure I wasn't left out, and that was very, very helpful and encouraging. And I want to thank Sheri and Andrew and Andrea, because they're, in the last two weeks before vacation, you're getting me to a lot of campuses, giving me a lot of opportunities. And today, Andrew and Chris and Brian and, no, Gary and Rick walked me around LAE, and it was such an incredibly wonderful experience with more expertise at a secondary level. It's so wonderful to be able to get down with those kids and, and see what they're accomplishing. They're just so incredibly brilliant, and you guys have created amazing programs for them. And I probably think that, Andrew, you probably wanted to get a body hook sometimes, because I didn't want to leave the classrooms. And the teachers were so engaging, so I loved every part of that, and I'm really thankful to all of you for arranging the opportunity for me to keep going. And I loved, as everybody has said, the concert on Saturday. My husband and I went, and just were, just completely astounded at the orchestration, because I don't get how you have hundreds of kids on a stage. I took line dancing class, and I took out the whole line. I mean, I went the wrong way. I, I just, the whole idea is very devastating to me, but to watch them is amazing, and I asked Moana, "So I'm going to get, I'm going to go sit in a whole morning and watch how you turn that into such a miracle." And then I, I think, finally, I'm really looking forward to the hard work that's ahead and learning from all of you, and I'm grateful and appreciative, I, and humbled, and I am always open, you know, when you get to be this age, which we're not going to talk about what age that is, but when you get to this point in life, you know, you can have a tough skin, but a willing heart, and that's what I feel like. I can, you know, I can take critiques, and I can, and I just want to learn, I want to not be a, I don't want to waste a seat. And I wish you all a very blessed holiday season. I love Christmas, I love, I, I used to really, I, I'd like to celebrate Hanukkah, too, because as a child, my girlfriend got eight presents, eight days of presents, or whatever it was. But anyway, happy holidays, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Davidson. So, I did a couple things. I, my husband is a commissioner on the Traffic Commission for the city of Los Alamos, and they do a lovely thing, because that is, they don't get paid or anything for that job. And so every year, they have a holiday dinner where they invite all of the commissioners, and they have a dinner, and then they give them little gifts, and it's just, it was a very nice time to get together, and got to, I got to meet a couple people I did not know, and I got to also connect with some people I knew very well. So it was nice being the plus one for once. And then, also, we, we attended the Seal Beach Parade, which is always wonderful, and to see so many of our students doing a variety of different things is always fun. Agenda planning with Dr. Kraup, as you can see, we had a lot to go through on this agenda. I also had a chance to go to choir, and I, I'm with you, Meg, it gets, it certainly gets you into the holiday season. But that was a very busy day, because I, I started at the Casa U Center. They had a open house, and they were having tours. And it had been a long time since I'd been there, and I decided I wanted to go by, and I went by very quickly before I went to the King and Queen of Hearts event. But one of the things that was so warming to me was how many of our students from the high school volunteer at Casa, and the leadership that they show in there, and being able, I think it's so important for children to be able to learn, to be able to connect that way, and to have compassion. And I remember that my husband, I'd get frustrated at our sons every once in a while, because I felt they were ungrateful, and he'd say to me, "Diana, they don't know any better." So to be able to give students an opportunity to really learn that and learn compassion, I think is a very important thing. So, I enjoy doing that as well. I also attended the first half of our safety, our Safety Committee, which Mr. Vlasic is doing an amazing job with, and I'm very, just always very proud to see what we've, what we've done and how far we've come. And there was some really interesting things, and I might highlight them further on a president's report later about bullying, and what really constitutes bullying, and a variety of other things, so we might bring that forward later. I also had the opportunity to give certificates last night at the Los Alamos City Council Meeting, to our outgoing mayor, Troy Edgar, and he's been a really wonderful mayor, he has termed out, we have terms in our city council, and he has done a lot of work in this city. As I said to him, I said, "You know, we've done some great work together, and we've worked really hard to get to yes, and then sometimes we just agreed to disagree on things", so, but it's been a great relationship. And we also had a Nikki Montamer?
Nikki Moninger.
Montinger.
Moninger.
Montinger. You can say it into the, Moninger.
Nikki Moninger.
Moninger.
A 1992 graduate, Nikki Moninger, who's a musician, and that's who you're talking about.
Yes, and so the city of Los Alamos honored her last night, and then we also gave her a certificate, so that was, our Hall of Fame just continues to grow. And speaking of Hall of Fame, Mr. Eklavaya, I know that you're getting ready to retire, and this is your last meeting, and you're here to the very last moment, and we really thank you for all the work that you've done, and some of the innovations you've done, and very, very much appreciated it, and thank you very much, and I hope that you really find some new wonderful passion that you get to do in your retirement, so. And I know that we've also had your children in our district, and so, thank you very much for being a wonderful parent, as wonderful, as well as being a wonderful employee. And then...
Yay!
And then lastly, I would like to say that, you know, this was an interesting election season. I did run along with Dr. Jeff Barky, he was my running, we ran together. We had been on the school board together for a long time, and we, I'd run one other time together, and we ran together. Jeff has served 12 years on the board and done some really amazing things, and so we're hoping to have him at a meeting sometime in the new year, and honor him for his 12 years of service as well. So, I wish everyone an incredibly Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and 2019 will bring